We're on. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 11th, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. Of course, Happy New Year. We haven't met since December, so this is our first meeting of the new year. As usual, I'm going to open by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, we always have our first order of business as public forum. Doesn't look like anyone's here in person. I'm wondering if anyone is joining us online who's here for public forum and wanted to speak up?
I may have missed it. Did you mention that Brian is joining remotely?
I will. Okay, so it doesn't seem like anyone's here for public forum. I did want to just note that Ed and I are here in the building and we're joined by our colleague Brian, who is coming on remotely tonight. So for announcements, Ed, did you have some announcements?
No, I just want to say Happy New Year. And as you can see, we're back under a temporary mask mandate due to a spike in COVID in town, so it's better to be safe than sorry, I guess. So I just wanted to point that out. I think we need to express ourselves. Other than that, that's it.
I guess I would just throw out a thank you to the DPW. We've had some icing, some kind of nasty weather, and we always appreciate the work that they do to keep our roads going. It's kind of been a light winter so far. Phil's probably going to kill me for saying that, because... But I just want to recognize, you know, we had that kind of unexpected icing last week that was pretty crazy. So anyway, we thank them. Okay, so the first order of business is the approval of some minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I don't see the date on here. Select Board Meeting Minutes, December 8, 2021.
Second.
So a motion is made in second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen, thank you for doing those. Appreciate it. So Topic 1 is Open Space Committee Chair Rich Abbott.
And here he is.
Oh, he's coming in.
Hello.
Hi, Rich, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Rich is joining us here in person. And Rich, you're here to discuss the pavilion construction project, which is the pavilion proposed for Smith Academy Park.
Correct. Just a brief update, and then sort of looking to get some input from the Selectmen in regards to where we're going. Just gonna grab a couple of notes here ahead. I had them. Anyhow, so just a recap. So last June, we went out to bid. We got one response for $300,000, which is pretty shocking. It's three times more than the amount of money we had, more or less. We did actually get a little bit more than a couple of dozen firms who sort of downloaded the plans, but only one actually submitted a bid. And so based on that bid amount and the fact that the original cost estimate was done in January 2020, we went ahead and ordered, you know, purchased another cost estimate, basically, which we got in October, and that was for $320,000. You know, it's just a... I think we all think it's a pretty hard amount to believe based on the size of that proposed pavilion and the fact is, you know, it's basically just some posts and a roof.
Right.
So that's where we stand. And the other piece is that I did submit a CPA application for another $200,000, just to get it in there by the November 1 deadline. I have no idea what, you know, if they have any intentions of approving it, and if they did, whether or not town meeting would approve it, and, you know, whether as a town we want to spend that much money for a structure like that. So that's sort of... The other possibilities out there would be, you know, as you may recall, when we did the renovations of the landscape renovation, we got a grant from the state under the park grant program. The other possibility is we try to apply for that again. We got... We did apply for the pavilion already once, but it was rejected, not, you know, because of the... My understanding, not because of the application, but just that they have limited funding and we just didn't make the cut, you know? That, you know, potentially could be another $100,000, which would make the amount that the town pays a lot more palatable, but we'd still be, you know... So let me just back up. You know, assuming that this $320,000 or more or less is a good figure, and that's very hard to know, you know, because when this bid went out, it was just the beginning or, you know, of this whole supply chain problem, and which resulted in really huge spikes in construction costs, materials in particular. I'm not sure this year, in 2022, whether that's eased... I think it's eased up maybe a little bit, but I'm not sure it's been anything dramatic. And I guess the question is, you know, in 2023, do we get back to a little bit more, I guess, what we consider normal construction cost, or are we, you know, is this the amount we have to work with? So getting back, you know, one of the options is to go ahead and apply for another park grant. You know, you have to apply by July of this year, and they won't announce it until December, and you can't cut... Even if you do get it, you can't... If you do get it, you can start construction after July 1, 2023, the new state fiscal year. And another option is just sort of look at prefabricated type of construction, you know? We wouldn't be able to... I don't believe we'd be able to get the design we have now. We'd have to sort of go with a whole different design, which opens up a whole other process, I guess. And, you know, it's one of these things, they would construct off-site based on specifications, which we'd have to give to them, and, you know, presumably it would be a little cheaper, or it would be cheaper. You know, whether the design is acceptable or not, one remains to be seen, how much, you know? So that's kind of where we're at. Sort of wanted to get some direction as to, you know, I guess the basic one, would the town, you know, is the town ready to spend $300,000 for it?
Okay, I just have a question. You said, did you go out to bid a second time?
No.
And you haven't... I mean, the last time we discussed, I thought maybe I was wrong, that you're going to rebid like now and for early spring because lumber prices have dropped down somewhat. So I was... And with only having one bid, it doesn't seem right to only get one bidder bidding on a project because they can, of course, bid whatever they want. So I really thought... I really think you should go out to bid a second time, just to see if it is, in fact, stays that high.
Well, I mean, that's part of the reason we got the new cost estimate, which was in October, to get a feel of whether that was, you know, out of, you know, out of whack or was actually in the ballpark. The other thing is that we only have like around $90,000, and it's just, just based on everything, there's no way we, you know, whatever the bid went up, came back for, we wouldn't have the funding, I don't think, to do it.
I mean, I just think it should be rebid. And if it is that high, then as the board, I'm on board, is trying to find a way to help you pay for it because we had asked you guys to delay construction for the 350th. So I think we'll... I feel it's important that we help you through this process, even if we have to go to town meeting and say, hey, we want the additional funding. But to make my mind feel better, I think having another bid again at this time of the year, because everybody's looking for work, might bring it in lower. Or it originally was designed at a higher cost than we really realized.
So I just want to say that, I mean, there's no question that building prices have gone up because of everything, the supply chain issues. I don't think they've gone up that much. Like, I don't understand why this is coming in so high. It doesn't even have walls. I mean, you can build a house for this kind of money. So I'm 100% supportive of getting a pavilion there, but I think that we need to just pump the brakes a little bit and figure... I don't think that it's in the town's best interest to spend over $300,000 on a moderately-sized open structure. I just think that that's... So I'm just wondering, I think along... I agree with Ed that we should go back out to bid, but what if we... Can we also send this to companies that, like the Barnyard or Skips or whoever, that do these prefabricated, and see if they can submit a bid that's something similar and get prices from them?
I mean, that's certainly a route we could go. I mean, there's some work... I don't know all the logistics in terms of bidding and all that stuff.
I mean, they're really... They're high quality. These are not, you know, we happen to do a lot of shopping around in the last few years, and, I mean, particularly the two in Connecticut there.
Those are the most in place in South Deerfield.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably a number of businesses that, you know, could get, would be interested in submitting a bid. I just think they're going to come in. I mean, was this built in place, so there was prevailing wage and all of that added into there?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's the whole...
I mean, so maybe this is a way... Because I'm all for applying for a grant, I'm all, you know, all of these types of things, but I don't... Grants are not grants. We shouldn't just spend money needlessly on this structure, so...
I don't know, does the... When you buy a prefabricated structure, do you avoid the prevailing wage and all that stuff?
No. You're paying prevailing wage for the labor work. So if the company is installing, building it, then you have to pay prevailing wage.
But I mean, if it's something that's built and then delivered to you?
Is that a building...
I mean, that's something to look into, I guess.
I see what you're saying, built and delivered, so it wouldn't be...
I mean, if Phil needed to buy a new small shed for the, you know, or the school...
Delivered.
When the school buys sheds, did they pay prevailing wage on the construction?
Probably if it was delivered in cash, probably not.
I mean, it's worth looking at. I think that needs to be looked into, but even so, it's still probably going to be less expensive.
Right.
So I think we need to do what we can to get this going. I think we'd all like to see it. You know, there's been some really creative use of that park, and I think we all want to see that grown, but that's a really expensive price tag for...
Just a cover.
A cover, yeah. So that would be my suggestion. Go out to bid, again, just as it is.
And check your prefabs.
But then also see if we can, you know, go out to bid to companies that will build it and then deliver it.
So we go out sort of bid just for the basic construction thing, which probably we can, it's maybe get that out in February. You know, we'd have to connect with the architect just to do some of the updates, and that could possibly happen in February. And at the same time, I'm just sort of trying to think in terms of when go through the CPC committee and trying to get funding, which, you know, how that's going to work out, but I guess we'll just have to see.
I mean, if we reduce the cost, then maybe we reduce what CPA has to put in and maybe qualify for a park, and it's just, you know, I think we can try to do all of these things, right, that have been outlined, and see what we can, you know, get built for... You know, we want it to be quality, we certainly want it to be attractive.
Right.
But I think we want it to be reasonably priced. It's gotten a little out of hand.
Right.
So... And I can't believe that all of that increase is just because of the delay. I mean, we did work at home. Prices didn't go up at all. It was bid before COVID, installed after, not $1 higher, so...
I mean, I agree. I, you know, the original one was 90. I thought maybe this, the updated one, might be 150 or something like that.
Right.
I don't know what changed.
And also, it's also, it was one bid, so it's... I mean, it's really not, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of lying items that I could go through and say, you know, and say, this looks, seems high, this seems high, but to actually come up with real numbers, I mean, that's what the cost estimate did. I think, you know, I think it would be lower than that, but, you know...
Yeah, because we're just providing a cover that's a shelter from the rain and stuff, and it's open, it's not enclosed, and $300,000 is a lot.
There are those other kinds of businesses that do things that are really...
Similar, very similar.
Very similar, quite grand in scale. So I think it's worth, you know, pursuing that.
For member Mr. Moriarty would like to say something.
Yes, Mr. Moriarty.
Hello. Well, first, I'd like to thank Rich and the Open Space Committee for putting this package together because it's very informative, even though the numbers are really high. I agree with what Diana and Ed were saying. But Rich, I guess I would ask that, it's not like you're going to go back and maybe get some bids, and if we could also, as my colleague suggested, seeing if there's other companies that can do it off-site, because I think we need to have something to bring forward to town meeting in May. So ultimately, the town's going to say, we want this, or this, or this, and if we can give them option 1 and 2, or ABC, if we have the time to put all that into place prior to then, I think that way we're all making informed decisions. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I think, right, I agree, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a plan.
Let's just try to get it done, because I think it would be so fantastic.
Right.
I mean, I really do. I'm supportive of it. I just, you know, want to make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck and...
I agree. Yep, okay.
Okay, Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, I'll follow up with you.
All right, yeah, I'll be in touch.
Okay, great, moving right along. Our next topic is, we are joined tonight by Treeworks of MA, Massachusetts. Tim Kane is here, and this is to discuss the host community agreement.
Hey, guys. Happy New Year. How's everybody doing? Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you and see you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Yeah, so I spoke to Marlene a few weeks ago about chatting with you guys during the Select Board meeting, and she requested that we put together just like a brief letter kind of outlining our proposal and what we were looking for, and I was just checking, have you guys got a chance to read that over?
I did, but I think for the sake of community, you know, people who may be watching or may watch at a later date, if you could explain what it is you're asking for?
Totally. So we just wanted to revisit the host community agreement that we made of the town of Hatfield a few years back. So we've been super excited to work with you guys throughout the licensing process, and then we opened for business this past May, so we've been open, making sales for, I think, seven months now. And we want, we just wanted to check in with you guys regarding the host community agreement and specifically revisit the 3% community impact fee that is a part of that. There's a lot of municipalities across the state where the towns are dropping that impact fee for cannabis businesses because they do not... They have not found there to be any impact reasonably related to the costs imposed upon the municipality by the operation of the establishments. So it's just wanting to check in with you guys, let you know where we're at. We plan on doing a lot to make a very positive impact to the community of Hatfield, and we outline kind of what we're doing from a volunteer standpoint and that proposal there. And, yeah, we just, we wanted to run that idea by you guys and get the conversation started, so kind of a rough outline.
I mean, I guess my initial inclination is to not reduce it at this point. I guess I feel like, you know, this is a competitive business. The locations that people are trying to get, particularly just off the highway, are good locations to get. You know, Hatfield's been, I think, a great community to work with for our cannabis businesses, and we haven't even, we don't even, we haven't had any revenue yet actually come in. So for us, for the community to have entered into these agreements, not even realize any of the, you know, the agreed-upon fees and already being asked to forego them is... I don't know. I guess I sort of came into tonight not really ready to make a decision about this, but that's sort of where I, where my head is right now, personally.
As far as myself, I'd like to get some more input from our departments if there has been any impacts, whether there's been more patrols for protection of the property or DPW had to do anything for drainage or whatever, I don't know. And I'm thinking too that I was under the impression that 3% was supposed to also provide for educational fees for the schools to do some training and that kind of stuff. So I understand what you're saying. I went online, I did some research on communities that are reducing the impact fee, but I don't know the reasons why they did, whether or not, because they already took in revenue.
That's what I was thinking. They may be communities that have been experiencing revenue. We're not, right?
But if we're going to provide any of that money for education and stuff, we need to have another future discussion on it, that's all. So not that I might be against it in the future.
But I, you know, I guess that's... I'm just not really ready to make a decision about this. I don't know how Brian's feeling.
Tim, it's Brian. I'm remote tonight. I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a good first step to open the dialogue and have a conversation. But for me, I also, you know, I read through the information, checked online, read your mail, your letter that came attached to the original agreement, and I'd like to do a little bit more research with other communities and other select boards and that type of thing, just to kind of get a feel for it. Doesn't mean I'm certainly not open-minded to have a conversation with you and Treeworks folks. Appreciate the assistance that your team, as you point out, assists with the Hatfield, to Hatfield Food Bank or the Food Bank of Western Mass, increasing the hours from 150 to 200, you know, so we appreciate that, but I do think we need to just, we internally need to get a little bit more information and do a little bit more research, or at least that's what I would like to happen before any sort of a decision is made.
Totally. Well, I appreciate that feedback from all of you guys. I definitely think that we should continue this discussion. The way that it's arranged, the host community agreement now, is that the impact fee would be due, I think it's 13 months after our first sale as a business, which is still six months out from this current date. However, we did choose to meet with you guys now because we think that should be revisited sooner than that, and we are certainly open to working with the town on sort of collaborating with a volunteer project, or if there is money going to the town in the form of a community impact fee, however that is determined, figuring out what that is going towards and what projects that's going towards. It does, like, the way that the law is written, it does require that you guys are supposed to document any impact costs that occur. So I would love to hear, like, if you guys do that deeper dive, what sort of impact, negative impact you guys have determined that we are making as a business. And, yeah, just trying to kind of stick home that point that, I know there's a lot of negative stigma and connotations with cannabis and cannabis businesses, but we're definitely trying to have like a really strong positive impact in the community, and whatever we can do to make that happen. I know for a lot of these, like, large corporate entities that own cannabis businesses in the state, for them, it's like, they may live in Colorado, and like, at the end of the day, it's easier for them to just write a check to the town that they've got license in at, you know, for that 3%, whereas we're three local business owners that self-started, self-funded, and 3% is a huge amount of money from total sales. So I just want you guys to consider it, and maybe we can revisit it at a future meeting or however you guys best determine.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm open to...
To your point, you know, this was new for all of us, right? When we kicked this off a number of years ago now, at this point, I know it took forever for all the licensing to come through for you guys, but I think it's been a very, personally speaking, I think it's been a very good working relationship between Treeworks and the town of Hatfield and the board of Selectmen. But I agree, we'll do some, you know, we'll do the research, continue the dialogue. And you had mentioned, when you last spoke, you know, about helping the town and volunteering. So how are you guys with building pavilions at Town Square? Okay. Only, I'm only kidding. We can erase that from the official minutes. So, yes, we will keep the dialogue open for sure, in my opinion, and continue the type of working relationship that we've established already.
Yeah.
We did volunteer and set up the Waxwing Outdoor Dining Tent last spring, and we did a pretty good job with that. I don't know if that qualifies for the job in town, but I'll throw it out.
Well, you have some experience, obviously, so, yeah, that's a good, that's a good sign.
No, I just want to be clear. I am open to considering this. It just, it just kind of, I don't know, it kind of came out of nowhere, and I, having not received any revenue at all yet, and, you know, so let's revisit it, but...
Hey, can I... This is Mac from Treework.
Hi, Mac.
I'm just curious if I could say something here on the record.
Sure.
Oh, great. Yeah, I just kind of wanted, I just do want to reiterate that we really see our operation now that cannabis is fairly popular in the state and then there's many other businesses across the state. We really see our business no different than the rest of the other organizations operating here in Hatfield. And so, you know, just at its core, having any negative impact, we just don't see that exhibit. And we, a couple other things, I forgot to mention that letter. We also do a considerable amount of work, purchase a considerable amount of materials from RK Miles down the road, as well as the other businesses that we use in town, and so we really just see that we have nothing but positive impact on our... So I know Tim touched on a lot of that, but just did want to reiterate that as well, too.
Great, and that's appreciated. Thank you.
Sorry, this is Milo Childs, the third business owner. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble with the video on my call, and I just wanted to chime in a little bit as well, to sort of reiterate a little bit of what Mac and Tim were saying, that, you know, the community impact fee is sort of stated to go towards negative impact on the municipality, which is stated in a way that needs to be documented by the town to show exactly what negative impacts our business is having upon the community. And I think really what we're sort of trying to bring to light here is that Treeworks itself is not bringing really any negative impact, but only positive impact on the municipality of Hatfield, shown by the jobs that we have offered citizens or residents of Hatfield, as well as the continuous money that we bring to the town by supporting local businesses such as the Chowder House, such as the Waxwing, such as Subway, RK Miles, local auto dealerships, and continuous, continual sort of revenue into businesses within the town, and that that is only really relating to a positive impact on the town. So I guess where we come to a conclusion is, you know, what is the, why are we being, why should we be penalized as a business and sort of isolated in a way that's different from all other businesses within the town who aren't being penalized and made to pay a fee for operating their business, and sort of trying to see, yeah, if we could just, in a fairness way, remove that fee because ultimately we're bringing jobs and we're bringing positivity to the town, and we're not sure why we should be penalized for that.
Okay.
I don't think it's a penalty, but that's...
Yeah, I think it's, it's sort of, it was put in place by the Cannabis Control Commission as sort of how this was going to operate through the whole state. I mean, it was understood by you when you... I mean, it was understood by you when you got into this business that there would need to be host agreements. It's, it's how the cannabis industry is a little different than all other industries, and this is one of the reasons, this is one of the ways in which it is different. So it is something you understood and knew when you got into the cannabis industry, that there would be host community agreements.
I think to Brian's point that he had mentioned, he's going to look into somehow, some, how other municipalities are kind of handling this matter. And I think what you will find is that everyone is coming to a realization that maybe this wasn't the right way to set it up. And as we brought up in the letter, you know, some towns are just actually dropping this, realizing it's, it's not really necessarily the right thing to do for some, you know, for some companies that are really having no impact. Now, if we're operating a busy retail store and we have police details and we have traffic backed up, we've seen that neighboring towns in these busy dispensaries, that's a different, different kind of conversation. But as a product manufacturer, we're pretty tucked away and quiet. We don't drive traffic. We don't need police details. We don't have any security infractions. We're very quiet. So I think you'll find some of that information as you, as you look at other municipalities. So thank you.
Yeah, I know, I'm interested in doing that, that research as well. So as I said, I'm open to this. I just want to do a little bit more research and, you know, we'll revisit it. And, you know, we won't wait too long. We, we understand your, you know, that you're looking to not wait too long.
Well, thank you. We, we definitely appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay. So Tree Works, are you all set for right now?
Yeah, thank you very much for your time, guys.
Thank you. Okay, so topic three is resignations and appointments. So it looks like we have a, Harrison Bardwell is no longer on Community Preservation Committee, and we do have Robert Hennessy.
So Harrison was the representative from Conservation Commission-
Right. And Mr. Hennessy is on the Conservation Commission.
That's right.
And so he is interested in serving in that capacity.
Make a motion to appoint Robert F. Hennessy to the Conservation Commission rep to replace Harrison Bardwell. Actually, we should accept Harrison's resignation. Do we have to do that first?
Um, I-
He officially resigned, so I guess we could accept that with-
I think, actually, I'm not sure that he, this is brought up at our last message.
I know, I mean, this doesn't look like an official-
Right, it's not a resignation letter. He, he spoke with, with Bob Hennessy, the Chair of Conservation, and I think, you know, they just-
So maybe he's not resigning from Conservation. He just doesn't want to be the CPC rep.
Correct. He's not resigning from Conservation.
So I think I may have stated that wrong. Yeah.
I just, he just-
So he's-
We find my, make a motion to appoint Robert F. Hennessy as the Conservation Commission Representative.
The Community Preservation.
Which would replace Harrison Bardwell, who's presently the Conservation Commission Representative.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Can I clarify what I said because it was a little mumbled? I just wanted to make sure we have it. So we're, we're appointing Bob as the Conservation Commission rep to the Community Preservation Committee.
Correct. Right.
I just, you didn't hear all the, with the masks.
So Harrison hasn't resigned from anything. He's still on the Conservation Commission. He's just not going to be the rep to, right. Yes, exactly. Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so next-
I vote in affirmative to-
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we have, well, this does say Harrison, that a resignation from Community Preservation, so should we accept that?
You, so, you, you can.
Why don't we just do that, just in case Lydia needs that on record?
Sure, it isn't going to-
So I'll make a motion that we accept Harrison's resignation as the CPC rep for the Conservation Commission.
Right.
I'll second that.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board needs to vote to appoint Bob Hennessy.
We did that before.
You did do that, okay.
Yeah, we did that before. Okay, and then we have a resignation from Cole Layton, from the Police Department.
Cole, thank you for your service. Sorry to see you go. I wish you the very best in your next employment, and I will make a motion to accept his resignation with regret.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So this is really just accepting a resignation. There is no appointment in its place.
That's right.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Kier.
How was everybody's day? Thank you for the interruption. I just would like to put out the word that the Capital Planning Committee, Capital Improvement Planning Committee is short one, at-large member from the community. So we could use someone who might be interested in getting their feet wet in town government. It's not a big commitment. It's only a few meetings usually here in the wintertime, but we could use an at-large member. Franz Bellacy, the longtime member of Community, of Capital and Planning, resigned last spring. So we're looking for another person who'd like to be on. We have representatives from the School Committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee, and two out-large members, one being myself. So we're short a member, but anybody who'd like to get their feet wet, like I said, could contact Marlene to-
Who's interested in how the town manages its capital projects because it's-
And you learn a lot about the finance side of things here at the town, too, as well, with the Finance Committee and the Select Board. And so, yeah, it's something to-
I will say that it's, it's actually really, I like being on that committee. It's interesting work. Dave keeps, runs a tight ship. Dave runs a very tight ship. And it, but it's interesting to see that whole community plan, and it's sort of the, you know, I mean, it goes out, what, at least 10 years?
Five, six years.
You know, vehicles and town projects and everything, and it's, it's actually really interesting. And it's a, it is a short window each year that you work between now and getting ready for town meetings. So it's a short commitment and, and actually very interesting to see how projects sort of come up and-
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
There's information posted on the town's website regarding that vacancy.
We have a meeting next week.
Yeah, for 19.
Right. Okay. So I'm seeing here, wait a second, oh, we got duplicate stuff in here. Never mind, I was getting confused. For some reason I have, okay. Okay, so that is topic three. Topic four is our DPW report. We're joined by Mr. Genevieve tonight. Phil, come on up. Happy New Year, Phil.
You know, as you know, I just want to thank the guys for all they did during the storm, doing, being shorthanded due to the COVID situation. They went above and beyond and, you know, I sent the email to them all and told them how much it was appreciated. So I just want to put that out there. Working shorthanded and the conditions that came abruptly during that ice storm, that ice freeze was very well-
Yeah, no, as I mentioned, that was appreciated, so.
Yeah. The other thing that's on the agenda for the DPW is the two individuals, the superintendents who are looking for their clothing allowance payment.
Their what?
The clothing allowance payment.
Yes.
So I, I'm recommending that, you know, those two individuals be awarded that, seeing that they are no longer represented by the union.
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that.
Brian?
It's been ongoing since that storm.
Yeah, I mean, this is nothing new. It's just continuing something that they've had. It's just outside the scope of a contract now.
I, I agree with that. Full support.
And their budget.
What's that?
And the money's in the budget.
Yeah, the money's been budgeted, yes.
Okay, so I will take a motion on this then?
I'll make a motion. Or Brian wants a motion? I'll make a motion to continue the policy, which is-
Here, right here.
Okay. Make a motion to continue the policy of awarding the $600 for each of the supervisors for clothing allowance and shoes, right? I mean, that's basically what that is, right?
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Phil?
That's, that's about all.
That's it? So the other, we just have to sign?
The other item in here, yeah, approve that.
Yeah, the wage classification.
And reclassification for Garrett.
Again, something that was already agreed upon.
Correct.
And this is just a, it's, do we even need, didn't we already vote on this? I mean, wasn't that part of all of the budget stuff last year? We already voted?
Well, yes, it was part of the development of, of the budget. And yeah, clearly at those meetings, budget meetings, the Select Board and Finance Committee supported that.
Yeah.
That increase, yeah.
Yeah, we all, we all agreed to that last year.
It's already been, I mean, I don't care if you want to revote it, but we've voted it before. However you guys want to handle it.
So I guess with that being said, and him moving into that division officially, do you have to vote on his clothing allowance?
Have to what?
Vote on his clothing allowance.
Isn't that part of what we just did?
Oh, that was actually just for, yeah, you did actually what you just vote, yeah. So it will be a supervisor. It'll become a supervisor's position.
Because I said there was only two, but now if he's being reclassified, he'll be the third.
Yes, that's right. It's a reclassification.
This vote would, was general for supervisors, so, okay.
I just want to make sure.
Do we want to just revote this? Or, I mean, it has been voted, the reclassification, we should revote it?
Yeah, go ahead.
And you can word it. I don't know.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this reclassification for the Highway Superintendent.
I'll second that.
Oh, you seconded it. That's our, you guys are throwing me off with your, so a motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So just, just so townspeople know, this, this was all decided during the budget of last year. It just didn't actually take effect.
Right, and actually, that was supposed to be effective July 1st.
Right. So he's been quite patient, to be perfectly honest. Yeah. Okay. And that was all we had for you, Phil? Did you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Marlene?
Okay. First item I have is municipal cybersecurity awareness grant application was, was submitted on behalf of the town. It is for the town and school to participate in a year-long training. It's going to include an initial cyber assessment, just to test everybody's knowledge. And there will be bi-monthly assignments and then an additional at-the-end assessment to see what, you know, everyone, all employees have gained. And let's see, notice of award was made December 21st. They had asked that towns, you know, withhold from, you know, not withhold, but, you know, moving forward, an official notification would be sent out. That was earlier this week to the local coordinator.
So they had embargoed it initially, okay. They do that a lot with grants.
They do.
Yeah.
They do, yeah. That's not unusual.
Yeah.
And the local coordinator for the grant is going to be our IT Support Services Provider, which I will address that shortly.
Okay.
From longer perigis. And webinars will be set up and scheduled, they are scheduled this week. Today was for the coordinators and tomorrow's for the signatory person, which I will be signing off on. So I'll be attending that webinar tomorrow. And they expect to sort of kick off these trainings the week of January.
So it's not really increasing our actual security in a hardware or software sense?
Right.
It's just a security awareness.
Awareness, test, it's, you're taking a test. You're going to be given assignments, and they'll also send out random emails to see who responds to it or see how you respond, or if you shouldn't be responding.
But there's no assessment of our, our actual hardware or anything? That's unfortunate because that would be great to make sure we're, okay. Okay, well, that's good.
Next item is delinquent dog licenses. That was submitted by the town clerk. And by law, Chapter 140, the town clerk submits a list of those delinquent dog licenses to the Select Board, and you have in your packet a list. And I was notified today that the first person on the list, town clerk was notified today that individual or that dog owner has moved out of town. So moving forward, by law, the Select Board may issue a warrant to the Animal Control Officer. And a draft copy of the warrant is in your packet.
And have they, have they gotten notices of this? Because-
They have been notified several times, either through email, telephone, I believe notices, actual notices were sent in the mail, and then a follow-up, either telephone or email.
Okay, interesting. I mean, some of these people are very responsible pet owners. I guess I'm kind of, you know, I know them personally. I guess I'm kind of surprised that something so simple hasn't been done. I mean, it's time to do the next year's. I've already done my dogs for this year.
Yeah. So yeah, this is 2021.
Right, interesting. Okay.
It has been an ongoing issue for the town clerk.
Yeah, that seems, it seems like such a strange thing to not take care of, especially when, a lot of ti, it's helpful, I mean, dogs get lost and then, you know, the, so, okay. I mean, what is she suggesting that we do?
This warrant.
Well, the next step would be to issue the warrant.
A warrant.
To the Animal Control Officer?
Oh, yes.
And basically, that's to collect the dog for, for non-
I think we should read the warrant so people are aware of what can happen-
We can review the warrant.
By not paying your dog fee.
You want me to read the whole thing?
Quite a bit of authority there.
I think they should know.
Yeah, because it is, that's kind of a big deal to come and confiscate your dog.
It is.
And I think people should realize that part of the renewal process is providing a rabies certificate. And it's a way for the town to make sure that the dogs that are within the borders of town have current rabies certificates. So I will read this. This would be issued to the Animal Control Officer, who is Scott Pomeroy. "In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to proceed forthwith to seek out, catch, and confine all dogs within the town of Hatfield not duly licensed, collared, or harnessed and tagged according to the provisions of Chapter 140 of the General Laws. And you are further required to make and enter complaint against the owner or keeper of every such dog." Oh, and to-
I know, this is very difficult.
"And to kill or cause to be killed only by the administration of barbiturates in a manner deemed accessible by the American Veterinary Medical Association Guidelines on euthanasia, except by gunshot." This is terrible.
It is.
"In case of emergency, each dog, which after being detained for a period of seven days, shall not then have been duly licensed, collared, or harnessed and tagged, except that any dog not found to be diseased may be made available for adoption for not less than $3. And you shall keep an account of such adoption and forthwith, pay over the money to the town treasurer. Before delivery of any dog so adopted, you shall require the purchaser to show identification and to register and procure a license and tag for such dog from the town clerk of the town where the dog is to be kept in accordance with the provisions of Section 137 of said Chapter 140 of the General Laws. Hereof fail not, make due return of this warrant with your doings therein on or before the first day of October next, on or before the first day-" the first day of October next, on or before the first day of January next, and on or before the 1st of April next, and at the expiration of your term of office, stating the number of dogs caught, confined, and/or killed, and/or adopted, in the name of the owners or keepers thereof, and whether all unlicensed dogs and cats in said town of Hatfield have been caught, confined, and/or filled or adopted, in the names of persons against whom complaints have been made, under the provisions of said Chapter 104th, and whether complaints have been made and entered against all the persons who have failed to comply with the provisions of said Chapter 140." So, I am all for making sure dogs are licensed. You know, I don't like some of the provisions in this. It seems like, yeah.
I mean, it's sorry that we have to go to the extreme of this warrant for something simple as making sure you have your dogs licensed. And the last thing we'd want to do was enforce some of the stuff that's in this warrant because that would be pretty sad. But if people don't want to make sure their dogs are rabies-shots and protected, we have to protect...
Is it possible that some of the dogs are no longer here?
That's possible. That is possible, that...
Not, I mean, maybe have passed or just aren't... You said one moved out of town.
Through the process, the animal control officer would determine that. Although, letters that have been sent, I don't believe have come back undeliverable because the individual doesn't live there.
Isn't that a question on the census? How many pets do you have in your household?
It is.
Yes.
Which are now... So, I mean, now's the time, if people haven't sent it in yet, to update the information because they're out there, you know?
Not everybody responds to the census either.
Right. I mean, you know, it's like any other, right? You have to get a permit to burn. You have, you know, there's certain things you should do in town that, you know, are the responsible thing to do. And as I said, part of the licensing process is proving that the dog has had a rabies shot, which I think most people in town would agree that dogs in town should have had rabies shots. So, and this is a year old. So, this is not exactly, you know...
Yeah, it's too bad. It really is. It's sad to see it come to this point.
So, be smart. Get your dogs licensed, that's all.
It took me all of five minutes. Took me five minutes and $10.
Well, and, you know, I had a conversation with the town clerk and it was the town clerk that said to me, she had a conversation with somebody that she knows. And the response was, I just don't have the time.
Well, I mean, you can pretty much do it online. I got the form, filled it out, you know? I mean, the rabies certificate is good for two years, so you only have to provide a new rabies certificate every other year. I think it's two years. Three years, yeah. I mean, I know Lydia has mine on file, so I didn't have to do it. I checked with her. She said it was active and it's pretty simple.
If the board is inclined to approve this warrant, then there would be a vote to issue the warrant to the animal control officer and the chair and sign the warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant.
I couldn't hear what the motion was. I'm sorry.
He made a motion to approve the warrant.
Second.
I mean, I guess my only discussion on this is like, I'm all for pursuing this. I just, I don't like the language in there about euthanizing dogs for this. I mean, knowing Scott, I think he would make sure, you know, take every possible step to make sure that that never happened. But I'm not comfortable with issuing an order that we're going to euthanize a dog because somebody can't fill out a little paperwork. So, that's my concern with that.
So, how do we get somebody to make sure they license their dog?
I don't mean we're going to do it. It just is, these are the possibilities. These are the legal possibilities or legal ramifications for dog owners not doing what they're supposed to do. That's how I look at it.
I mean, it directs him to do these things.
I had a dog for years and we follow the rules and the regulations. You know, it's costing us $0.55 every time we have to mail a letter, right? I mean, so, you know, it's not big money. And we know everybody loves their pets and loves their dogs. So, if you still have yours, do what you're supposed to. If you don't, let Lydia know. Otherwise, we're, you know, she's not going to know if your pet is still with you or not, so.
And I will say that it's a relatively short list because there's a number of people on here that have more than one dog. And knowing how many dogs are in town, overwhelmingly, residents are licensing their dogs.
Yeah, but look at the number of years on some of those, Diana. I mean, I'm sitting here shaking my head. It's like, wow, it's not like it's a one-year miss. I mean, some of these are two, three, four years. Come on, people.
Yeah. That's why I'm wondering if some of these dogs are... Yeah, here's one that's six years, hasn't been licensed for six years.
So, if some kid gets bit and gets rabies, whose fault is it?
Right.
It would be ours because we didn't get the dog officer, the stuff to...
It's strong language. It's very strong language.
It's mass, mass general laws.
It's the mass general law. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the warrant will be issued to Mr. Pomeroy? Would you like me to continue or would you like to move?
No, we should continue.
Okay. Just one last item that I have, IT Support Services. I had requested quotes. We, I had decided on behalf of the town that it was in our best interest to look at terminating our services with Perigis IT and requested quotes for IT Support Services. And we have signed on with Souzer IT. They have a main office in Greenfield. And their business is primarily municipalities and schools. And, you know, I met with all the vendors that had responded. There were three vendors that we met with. And Souzer IT, you know, very clearly demonstrated that they are familiar with local government and schools. And I think they'll be a very good fit for the town. They took over services as of January 1st. And so, we're just, there's a little bit of a transition period. So, you know, we have retained some services with Perigis for that transition purpose, of the transition, I'd say. So, all the department heads were made aware of this a couple of months ago. And, yeah, we think things are going to work out very well.
Great. Is there a financial savings with the new company?
There is.
That's great. Well, that's just great. Thank you, Marlene, for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, let's see. Moving right along here. Are we taking up any of these old businesses? I mean, it looks like we are, the Town Hall second floor balcony.
We could take, the items, Topic 6 and 7, we could take up later, defer to the end of the meeting if you'd like.
Well, this is going to be, we could be fairly lengthy now. I just, are these quick? Could we just go through them?
I think so, yes. Yes, I know Topic 7 is, and I'm pretty confident that Topic 6 is brief.
Okay. So, who's speaking to Topic 6?
I'll speak to Topic 6.
Eddie and I will be glad to.
I mean, right now, we received a report from Jacob Smith Engineering and Design. And previous discussion was that we wanted to know that if the balcony was safe to support anything, because it's been, the building's over 100 years old. And we have a report from like 15 years ago that had some concerns about the weight that could go on the balcony. So, this here is to come in and review the balcony. And it sort of says, I'll read it. It says, "Thank you for your consideration regarding this project. You have informed me that the town of Hatfield is investigating the possibility of converting a portion of existing second-floor area from existing stage seating to a general storage area." So, what he's saying is he'll come in and he'll review existing documents. He'll do analysis of existing structural assemblies to determine existing live load capacity. And he'll also provide a design to bring it up to code so that the upstairs is at code. And what he's requesting is $1,800 for that work, which I think is a small amount of money. So, I think it's something that should be done so we know once and for all what can we put up there and what would we have to do if we wanted to have that space used for any other means.
It's something that keeps coming up. We just need to figure it out. So, I think that this is great. I have no problem with this. I think it's great. Do I take, do we need to vote this, Marlene?
Yes, please. I think it's money well spent, you know, just to, you know, determine the structural
So, I mean, I don't know if Brian wants to comment before I make a motion or not.
He's good.
I'm good. Thank you, Ed.
So, I'll make a motion to spend the $1,800 to get this proposal and design from Jacob Smith Engineering and Design.
I'll second that motion.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Again, Ed, thanks so much for your work on that. I appreciate it. And Marlene? And Phil? You may have been involved in that, too. Thanks. Master plan update?
Just quickly, I have been in communication with the planning board. We'd like to move forward with the next step in preparing for our next master plan update. And you have a copy of, you visited this draft a couple of meetings ago. We've updated it, you know, based on communication with the planning board. And this posting would actually be to fill the at-large seats. Now, the number of at-large seats depends on what the Select Board decides that committee, you know, will be made up of. Also attached in your packet is a list of boards and committees that would be represented on the master plan committee. And I'd just like to, I had reached out to the planning board chair and historical commission is not on this list. So, I wanted to, you know, Stephanie, slash the historical chair...
Planning chair.
Planning board chair agrees that it would be helpful to have somebody from the historical commission.
I agree.
So, I wanted to put that out there to the Select Board for your consideration in reviewing this list. So, what I'm asking for is if the board will approve this list of boards and committees and approve the invitation for volunteers to fill the at-large seats. So, first, we need to establish how many, how many seats we'll have on the committee.
Personally, I think if we add historical commission, that would be 10 seats that are filled by people that are on other boards or committees, which then to me means we should probably have three at-large seats. So, you have a committee of 13. And I do know that there's someone in this room who has expressed some interest.
Yes.
Mr. Keer. Who would be a great addition to this committee, so...
I've had somebody else come forward.
Oh, good.
They were listening to a planning board meeting and expressed interest.
Well, in the interest of time, and we have these other, but so, I guess I would suggest we have the committees listed, which for the sake of those watching, agricultural commission, community preservation, conservation commission, open space, planning board, DPW, recreation commission, redevelopment authority, school committee, and then we would add historical commission. Is there any reason to have a representative from the housing authority?
Actually, it'd be a good idea. I think that would be helpful. Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Diana.
Add the housing authority as well. I mean, someone from the housing authority. I mean, it's just a suggestion, but it would change potentially the number of at-large number, people that we appoint because we want to have an odd number. It would be, it would start getting to be a really big committee. But I, it's, I'm, it's, there's no one on from Council on Aging. And, I mean, I see, you know, some of those issues that affect some of our older citizens as needing to be addressed by a master plan potentially.
Or maybe somebody from the Council on Aging is represented, the board of Council on Aging.
Yeah, I don't know. Or maybe historical and Council on Aging. And then three at-large members. So, now we're back up to an odd number. What do you guys think about the housing authority and Council on Aging?
I'd like to think that, given the committees that are already going to be on that master plan committee, that while there might not be direct representation from COA or the housing authority, I certainly would imagine that, given the size of our community and the intimacy of our community, those groups would still be recognized or thought about or part of the process, even if they're not at the table directly. That's all. Because you do have to manage the amount of members of that committee.
You do. And I mean, the last one was quite large, but I think, I don't think it's fair to say we should hope that someone's going to represent the interests of those on here. None of these other committees really have anything to do with Council on Aging or housing authority. You know, and, you know, frankly, our housing, our elderly and senior housing is getting older and it should be part of what's considered in all of this. So, that's my two cents. And I, I mean, I'm the one who just said, let's try to wrap this up in the interest of getting to our joint meeting, but I don't know what people think. I mean, we could do it this way with, set it up this way with historical commission and three at-large members, and then think about it. We could always enlarge it by adding the both other ones at a future meeting. But it might be, you know, I don't know how, it's how you feel about it.
I don't see a problem if we want it. I mean, how big do you want a committee? I mean...
It's a big job.
It is. And, you know...
I mean, it doesn't hurt to get viewpoints from everybody you can.
So, I, yeah, I think, you know, Diana, what you're suggesting is that, yeah, we move forward, add historical commission and start with three at-large. And I'll have some conversations with the planning board as well.
Yeah, I mean, I see one of our needs in the future is a Council on Aging building. I think that we are going to need to eventually address some size issues and everything else over here. It's, I think it's, should be on everybody's radar screen and there should be a seat at the table.
If Daryl's here, he could ask him after the last one, was there anything that they, anybody that they should have put on there that they wish they had not asked or wished they had? I mean, Daryl's online right here.
Yes, don't we think that the at-large committee members are going to represent theoretically those committees that aren't represented with a member?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, I'd like to think that the three at-large members are seeing the big picture, the big picture of the town as a whole and not going to be pigeonholed into representing necessarily one group or another. I don't know. Daryl's on here. I don't want to put him on the spot, but I don't know, since he did the master plan committee last time, if he thinks or has an opinion on what we're talking about.
Hello?
Hi, Daryl.
Yes, I was on the master plan. It's a very big job. I assume it, last time, it took us several years to get it done. There were changes on the committee as we moved along. We were a big committee, but at least at the beginning, the more input that you get from... from people, the broader the perspective we get, the easier it is to narrow down what actually needs to be done. I would assume that TVPC or somebody like that is going to be working with the planning board and the committee to get this done. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know. But, yeah, that's my opinion. I mean, it's hard to be too big, you don't want anything too big, but this is a long haul.
It is a long haul. And I guess I just don't think it's fair to say, well, we're having certain groups represented here. You know, we're having, very appropriately, the school committee represented, but then we're just going to hope someone's going to represent, you know, the needs of the seniors in town, people who are trying to age in place, people who are, you know, living in our housing authority. I think that it's important that they're, that they're, you know, adequately represented on this plan. So I guess my thought would be those listed, add historical, add housing authority, add council on aging, and then add three at-large members.
Right. And I didn't, I mean, I heard rumor and made rumor that someone, that FinCom was going to have somebody on, but I didn't hear that mentioned. Maybe that's not the intention of you guys, but just checking.
Actually, I think the memo from Stephanie does suggest that, recommends that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It was a suggestion, but, and I certainly don't have a problem with it, but none of this has anything to do with dollars at this early stage anyway, right? I mean, it's, the town needs what the town needs, but again, I rely on those that maybe have done it before or have a different, a different outlook.
I guess my, I would agree with Diana. I don't think it hurts to put, add some of these other committees, at least at the beginning. You're going to get people that are going to fall off, that aren't going to want to, just the nature of the beast, because it'll take a little while to get it all done, but getting as many different perspectives to start is kind of a good place to start.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we'll add council on aging and housing authority?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And then three at-large.
Yes.
Okay. So do we have to vote to?
Yes.
Well, I.
Well, actually, no, you don't have to vote now. We're creating this. So when the board makes those appointments, then you can vote at that time.
Okay.
Take up the appointment, yeah.
Which gives us time to continue to think about it. I mean, I, it's a big job. It warrants a big committee and it warrants everybody having a seat at the table.
So we'll post the invitation for the at-large seats and we'll notify the boards and committees to designate who their representative will be for the select board's appointment.
Yes.
Okay. That's done.
Okay. So thank you, Finance Committee and Capital Improvement Planning Committee, for your patience. Well, that took unnecessarily long. And that's my fault. I'm sorry. What's that?
We have the fire chief also.
And the fire chief.
Here on the agenda.
Oh. Did I miss it?
Topic.
No, he's next. He's topic. Right after master plan update.
Okay. Yes. I thought that was the full discussion of everything. Topic. Is there a revised agenda? Oh, okay.
Oh, you didn't get that. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob. I was going off of the first agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, Bob's here just to, you know, present some information. Basically, he's not looking for an immediate response.
Right.
But just really to make the select board and, well, select board aware that potentially his current operating budget could fall short.
And the Finance Committee needs to hear this.
That's not 100%. That's not what I'm here for.
Oh.
My point is, I obviously, I submitted my budget. Some of you may have had a chance to look at it because I did email it to FinCom and select board. My point tonight was a follow-up to a meeting in December to let you know, and there was a question of looking at trends, seeing our call volume was increasing. Obviously, the article made it into the paper about looking for some help. And this was kind of just a follow-up. It came up a little bit quicker than I was expecting, but I was there. I did email everybody some information this afternoon. I know originally, Mr. Marotti was asking about looking at trends over the last few years, and I think if you got a chance to see any of that paperwork I sent out, you can see that our numbers have been climbing over the last three years. You know, we had a slight dip in EMS call volume in 2020.
This is specifically ambulance for people listening at home, right?
Well, this is across the board. Everything has actually gone up.
Okay.
From last year, we ultimately, we had a 15% increase in fire calls. And from 2020 to 2021, it was a 27% increase in EMS. The difference is EMS in 2020 dropped, less people were on the roads. I could tell you, we had less motor vehicle accidents. So it all, it all kind of comes to be is that that first year of the pandemic certainly made a difference, but even if you look back to 2019, and we have some other data that we could certainly bring forward, the numbers are continuing to trend in the upward direction. And you can see that fires in almost an 18% increase in three years. EMS is about an 8% increase. The bigger issue is that we're having trouble covering that with our current call department. This is kind of a broader scope picture, but it's something that needs to get brought up now is kind of up to the select board and then ultimately the voters to kind of make a determination of what they're expecting out of their emergency services across the board. I know Chief Dukoschak has some of the similar feelings. Volunteerism is down across the country. I get articles every single day about this, especially in the fire service and EMS. I'm essentially running the ambulance department with about four and a half people. And the fire department, I only have about 13 active members. But yet, you see, the call volume is going up. We missed out on a lot of ambulance calls in 2021, as Ms. Zinal is well aware. We had a meeting earlier in, or the mid-part of 2021. So it's really just to get people to be aware that the town is changing. Trying to rely on a call volunteer department is not really feasible anymore. And the town is kind of having to get to the point where we are going to have to go to some type of full-time staffing. I have a proposal, those that got a chance to look at the FY23 budget, you'll see that it is for 16-hour-a-day staffing, seven days a week. I'll be honest, I can't do it all myself, and that's what I've come down to. I've upwards of 62% of EMS calls in a year, and our trajectory is already up. We are on day 11 of 2022, and we are 26 calls deep already. And I have been on 22 of them because I don't have any other staff.
And I'm assuming they're not all happening during your normal working hours?
They are not. I was out at 4:30 this morning. I was out on Sunday. I was out on Saturday. It's just kind of where it's come to be at this point is that we just can't rely on the call volunteers, and I can't do everything myself. That's not truthfully what I was hired for. I like my job, but I can't be expected to go to every single call that the town has. So the town is going to have to make some decisions. And I put some proposals together for the FY23. This could be a further discussion over the next month or so. This was kind of a quick one. I know you guys have a joint meeting. You know, it might be the point where we have to start putting some staffing on to finish out FY22, which then would in turn mean that I'm going to, I would potentially run short of my budget. As of right now, I don't. But if we were to add, start adding some staffing, that would be where it would come out to be where Finance Committee would get involved. We missed a lot of calls last year, I'll be honest. And missed calls means lost revenue.
And it means there's ramifications for residents, I mean, that none of us are comfortable with.
Yeah. We have a very large elderly population in town. I don't want to see anybody wait, but it is realistic that you're going to wait 10 to 15 minutes for North Hampton. You might get South County. We actually had Highland ambulance out of Goshen at one point in 2021, just because we can't staff. So these people are waiting and they are sick. And I will tell you, most of our calls are at the ALS level, so I do thank the townspeople for approving the paramedic equipment back in 2016. But it's kind of where we're going in this direction right now. It's just, the calls are off the charts nationwide, but in the region, and we're relying on a very, very small pool of people to handle this type of work. So being able to potentially put some shifts in place, people are going to be more inclined to come and work an eight-hour shift and know that they're going to get paid and not just keep themselves available. People, nobody works in town. I mean, I have absolutely no, no employees that actually work in town on the fire ambulance department at this point. That's not what it was.
Which is, you know, different than it was years and years ago, right? So people who've lived here a really long time know that there used to be a lot of people in town who would respond to fire calls, even DPW employees would respond to.
DPW.
It was a very, it was different. It was a different time. And I guess, so you're not looking for a decision tonight? This is to make us aware. I think the Finance Committee needs to be aware. What I would urge people to do, so I have had a chance to talk with Bob about this a number of times, and I think it's really, I would urge people, my colleagues or members of the Finance Committee, to reach out to Bob and maybe get some background on this so that everybody has a little bit more information about this, you know, in a longer, more involved, detailed way than we can really get into tonight.
I have all the data. Anybody that wants to, wants to call me up or email me, I'm more than happy to send it their way. The full-time guy that we, that I was able to put on last year, he's actually great. He's doing a lot of this work while I'm doing other admin work. So he's actually the one that's been tracking some of this data. And some of these numbers don't include, you know, calls that we miss, which is kind of the big part, in my estimation, is that we're not covering our calls. That's not good for the residents and then ultimately not good long-term.
Right.
You know, in the financial situation. So.
Yeah.
I just needed the people to kind of understand that. You know, we are, we are still the only department in town that is, you know, a call department and relying on volunteers, and we're just, we're kind of not there anymore. And people realize, I've heard the comment in the 21 years that I've been in town, you know, it's a small town, 3,300 people. The problem is, emergency services don't just answer to the 3,300 residents. We go to 91, we're on 5 and 10, we're at businesses. On any given day, it's 7,000 or 8,000 people that are actually within the borders of Hatfield, and we could potentially respond to any one of those. So just so, so the residents get that bigger picture that it's not just the 3,300 people that live in Hatfield that we're responsible for. It is significantly more on any given day.
And I know you've put a lot of information out about looking for people who maybe want to be on the call fire department and that sort of thing. I would just reiterate that for anybody listening, but I guess I would just urge the Finance Committee members to give Bob a call and get a little bit more in-depth background.
Now, you did mention, you did mention at our last discussion on this that a temporary fix could be maybe 16 hours.
Correct.
I mean, do we, are you at the point where you might really need that at this time?
It is really there. You know, Saturdays and Sundays are actually starting to show our highest call volume as of right now and what the trend is looking like. And we're not covering a lot of those because that's when people aren't available. You know, they're, they're out for the weekend, they're on vacation, or they're just, they're not available. So that really is probably one of our biggest areas right now, but also evenings. Those are the times that I'm looking for. Weekends would be that first fix to be able to put, put people on for that timeframe.
Do we have a cost on that? If you were to go to the Finance Committee and say, I need this much money to June, what that might cost for the 16 hours?
So I don't have it broken down for the six-month period, and it would even be six months because obviously we're already partway through into this year. I could tell you that a paramedic and a basic 16 hours covering the weekends, because if we're going to do this, we really need to make sure that we're covering, because otherwise we're just going to pay intercept fees, which then doesn't really do us any good long-term. A weekend coverage alone is just under $72,000 for those two positions for a full year. So theoretically, we're, you know, 30, 32,000 to finish out this year if we were to get somebody in place now. I could tell you, I have people calling regularly, looking to come and work here as actual shift work because they don't live in town. So I, I don't think it's going to be a problem trying to fill the shifts if we get that financial backing. It's just, how do we go about doing that? I could tell you, and I know that's probably going to be a question of the Finance Committee and when they, as we go to look at FY23, this isn't going to be something that's going to be covered out of ambulance revenue. It's just, we can cover a portion. It will help offset some of the costs with revenue of lost calls, but it's not going to be a catch-all. It's not that the ambulance can self-sustain 100% across the board if this is the direction we have to go.
And that's where I was going earlier, you know, when I had said, you know, talking about his current operating budget. So, you know, I think, you know, I guess the question is, does the department continue to run just as it has been? Or, which is really, you know, taking a lot of energy.
Well, 26 calls in 11 days is a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Most people don't realize it. Like, we average about 18 to 20 EMS calls a month regardless. That's our norm. And they vary at times of day. And we're really tracking all that information, so if people want that, we will have all of that data readily available to show that this is the time of day, these are the eight-hour blocks that we're breaking the day down into to really prove this is the reason why we're asking for this.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons I was asking people to reach out to you personally from these committees, because you do have a lot of that information. I've seen it, even the information from North Hampton about when they were, the times of days they were coming here, days of the week they were coming here. That's really, it's interesting information, and I think it would probably be in the interest of, you know, the Finance Committee to try to have those conversations with you.
Absolutely. I would hope you'd reach out.
I can look at it from another perspective. If you've missed 95 calls, and each call is what's.
We average $700 in revenue per call.
Okay, so times that by 95. I mean, well.
Yeah. I get where you're going. Yeah.
You see where I'm going, right? I mean.
But for me, it really comes down to the fact that I want to know, and I want, I want to know that when residents dial 911, that they're getting a timely response.
Yes.
And, and we have to have the personnel to make sure that that happens. So, anyway, I think, you're not looking for, obviously, we're not prepared to make a decision tonight, but I guess, I don't know how you feel about it, but I think you talking with Finance Committee members would be a really good idea.
I would, I would welcome them to reach out.
I don't know how much Brian and Ed know, but I appreciate the information I've been given, and I would urge people to have those conversations.
Well, I think the information you've put together is good for the townspeople also. I mean, I'd put that out on the website or something to let people know.
Yep.
How busy you guys are.
It is all out there. That's one benefit. We have it on our Facebook. We have it on our website. We're doing actually daily updates now of our call volume, so everybody can really start to see that. And then anything else that anybody is interested in, by all means, reach out. I want to be as open and honest with anybody that's in the town. This, this isn't me trying to shirk work. This is a reality that the town has come to, and it's just, we have to kind of make that next step, unfortunately, but it does, obviously, going to come at a cost.
Well, plus, I'm also concerned till the end of the year, if you guys are overwhelmed with all this work right now, if there's something we can do for a temporary fix until the end of this fiscal year, so.
I think that's why I'm urging the Finance Committee to have these conversations and.
This was that first piece to let everybody know at work that the Finance Committee was on. I wasn't sure if I was going to be before or when they were actually on.
And in the interest of time, and we have a lot to discuss tonight and some things that I, you know, I think you've made your point, and I would urge those folks to make sure that they have a more in-depth conversation with you about some of that. Thank you, Bob, very much. It's important to keep us aware of all of these things and townspeople.
It's very helpful information that he has made available.
Finance Committee, thank you for your patience. I'm actually glad that you were here and got to hear some of that. I hope that you'll reach out to the chief if you have additional questions or you want extra information. Okay, so tonight's discussion with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the Finance Committee is around the use of ARPA funds. As townspeople know, we're getting 970, or we have $971,000, correct?
Correct.
And ARPA funds, which is American Recovery, what's the P stand for?
You would ask. American Recovery.
Anyway, pandemic, maybe? I don't know. I, anyway, everyone knows that ARPA funds are recovery funds from the federal government, and there's specific parameters around which we can use them. And so we have a number of project request forms here from various departments.
American Rescue Plan.
American Rescue Plan, right.
So I want to make sure everybody received information that I sent out this afternoon. It's a spreadsheet from the accountant based on all the projects. And more importantly. And more importantly, the email contained a recent ruling the U.S. Treasury approved just, that was last week, Lori, right? Yes, it was last week. Our accountant is joining us. So it has been, the ruling is that the amount of money allotted to communities, you may use that total allotment as loss revenue. As opposed to, you know, for, well, you could make claim for loss revenue and use some of that money. Now, the rule is that total amount can be used as loss revenue, and you can pretty much use it for anything. Hmm. Lori and I had a conversation this afternoon about it. Lori, would you like to?
That's the way it reads.
Yeah. That is, that's the bottom line.
I think I'm still, I'm still in shock, and I still was kind of waiting for the other shoe to fall, but yeah, I mean, they basically said that towns, we can take a standard allowance, up to $10 million, as revenue loss.
I spoke to Lori this afternoon.
So we're only getting 981. We can take that entire thing as revenue loss and use it for general government services, which is a pretty general category.
That was an email that was sent out this afternoon.
None of this eligibility anymore.
I did not see that email.
If we go that, if the town goes that route, which I don't see why we wouldn't, it's kind of like free cash, and it doesn't even have to be appropriated.
That's a good point.
Well, if you think about it from the Treasury's point of view.
Yeah.
Without block granting it to some state agency to oversee it, I mean, really, what are they, they're going to use federal audit processes to try to reclaim the money at the end after you spent it? Like, that's a nightmare. You know, I can understand why they're doing this because it's the only recourse they would have would be some federal audit to do it. Unless they're going to, because they're not using a state agency to oversee it, you know, which is kind of like how you would do different things, you know? We have reporting requirements and everything, but this doesn't have that. It's a lot of money out on the table right now, so.
They will still be reporting requirements, but very, you know, the requirements are much less restrictive. So that kind of changes the game plan, you know? If we were going to go through all the projects and kind of prioritize them by eligibility and, you know, importance, that eligibility is off the table now. If everyone agrees that that's what, you know, you want to just take the full allocation as revenue loss and move forward instead of, you know, option B is we can do the revenue calculation, which we did, it comes up to about $100,000 if that. So, you know, you have two options. You either take the full $900,000 as revenue loss, or you can do the actual calculation and take like possibly $100,000 a year. It seems like a no-brainer to me, but I'll let you guys make that decision.
But it doesn't mean we have to spend it all at once, anyway.
Right. Right.
And I guess I.
Take the whole $900,000 or $961,000 as a revenue loss, you can essentially tuck that somewhere and use it over the next, essentially like free cash.
Well, there are restrictions, Darrell.
Yep.
Say that again, Marlene.
There are some restrictions that cannot be used for legal settlements, debt service, pension. Did I miss any? I think that's all of them.
I mean, we would. Right, but that would presume you're not going to pay those things otherwise.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, if you use general operating funds to pay your pension debt, and then you use this to do something else, you know what I mean? And that would only come into play if you weren't going to pay the pension debt, if you didn't have the money to pay it otherwise. I mean.
Oh, okay.
We want to, we would want, we still want to spend this money like free cash. We don't want to get, we don't want to put it towards general budget items, which we would not then in future years have that money to use.
Yeah, you can't, you can't use it to reduce the tax levy.
Right.
So you can't use it in that capacity. But I would still consider it ARPA funds, and I would still consider it, I would still consider using it for the purposes that have already been brought forth, you know, like.
I agree.
I mean, that, you know, like, I feel like that's ultimately what it's for, you know? Like, it's for recovery. So if we actually need some recovery, let's use it for that, you know? And then kind of prioritize what the town needs and what everyone agrees that we should use the rest of it on. Take your time to spend it, you know? We have four years to kind of think about it, plan it out. I wouldn't, you know, go spending it crazy, but, you know, some of the small ones that are on the table already, you know, are all eligible expenses no matter which way.
Yeah, I guess, can I just pipe in with my, I guess we have some sort of clearly COVID-related, and they're, again, as Lori said, small things, air purifiers, that sort of stuff. There's smaller ticket items. I think that they're really relevant right now. The gowns, isolation gowns, gloves, wipes for the ambulance, like, those things make sense to me. They're inexpensive, and we could take care of them now, but I think, I still think we should be, you know, very careful about how we spend this, and this is, you know, this is a lot of money that we didn't expect to see, will probably never see again. So I really like the idea of particularly using it towards some of these infrastructure projects, which really just ultimately sets us up in future years. Those are items on our capital plan that will be taken care of. It frees things up for some other items and other projects. That's my thought on it. So I would be open to taking care of some of the very clearly COVID-related smaller ticket items tonight, and then maybe thinking long and hard about how we get the most bang for our buck with the rest of this money. That would be my, you know, I want to do the best we can for the most people in town with this money, and particularly things that can set us up for, you know, the financial decisions we can make now with this that will ease up some of our financial burden in the future. Mr. Keer.
I think, I think I'm 100% with you. Just probably, you know, in the next couple of months, once we have the capital plan done and submitted to the Select Board in cooperation with the Finance Committee and the School Committee, and you'll have a very clear list of the things that need to get done, and then you can just start deciding which of those you want to do. We'll also know our free cash situation, so you can look at, take those, both of those piles of money and start chipping away at the things on the capital plan.
Right.
I mean, not everything on the capital plan is going to get done next year, because there's just not that much money, but certainly prioritizing the things that are there between the Select Board and the Finance Committee and, you know, come to town meeting with a list of things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's our job right now, to make sure that that's good and complete and up to date, and all the department heads have submitted things that they think they might want to have on here, which I think they have so far, so.
Well, and the great thing about the capital plan is all of the projects that are on there have been, right, thoroughly vetted.
Yeah.
So they're really, you know, projects that are necessary. They've been put into the, sort of, the pipeline.
Yeah.
They come up as needed, and so, so I guess, are there particular ones on here? I mean, I'm looking at air purifiers for town hall, air purifiers for the school, and the isolation gowns, gloves, and wipes for the ambulance. I mean, I look at those as things that are very clearly COVID-related. We should probably get those purchases going.
Is there air purifiers for the fire department also?
Fire police as well, yes.
There is?
I mean, I remember the last meeting we had, there was some discussion about something to put in the trucks, right, from?
For the truck, yeah.
Yeah, I also have. There was in the building, and then also a couple of units for apparatuses.
In the apparatus, so that when they're on their way back from calls and things like that.
I do remember that, but am I missing it on here, Marlene?
Exactly, on that list. Did you see that list?
Is that included in the air purifiers for town offices, though?
I.
Darren was working on that list.
Those were just the stationary ones.
Oh, Phil? Phil?
Yes?
Did you want to come to the microphone?
I just want to throw my two cents into this. As you know, that under the ARPA funds, I've submitted quite a bit of infrastructure projects. If we keep putting this off and not making decisions, the price keeps going up. It's going up, up, up. There's some smaller things in there that I think that we could take a hard look at and get done. I understand all the COVID-related stuff, I get it, but there's infrastructure projects that have been there for years and years. There's infrastructure projects with the wastewater for the generators. If you have a failure at that Maple Street pump station, you're going to spend more than what you have in the ARPA funds.
No, I understand that, and those things are on the capital plan. I mean, we're meeting, we have our first meeting next week.
I mean, we worked very hard to get solid numbers. We submitted, one time we submitted, then they wanted forms, we submitted the forms. It just seems like it keeps going on and on and on here, and there's no decisions being made.
Well, there has to be accountability, though.
What's that?
And we, I said there has to be accountability for use of these funds, and that's why the accountant is doing.
And the first round of it was water and sewer infrastructure. I mean, I don't see how much clearer it was. We did not submit, we did not submit a wish list. We submitted things that have to be taken care of.
Phil, I'm, that's exactly what I was just talking about, that we have to make these decisions on things that are most impactful, both on our infrastructure right now and on freeing up our availability to get to other things on the capital plan ultimately. So, I mean, are you suggesting that, like, waiting for capital plan to have a meeting or two is too long on these things?
I'm just saying that there's some things in there that the department has already spent. Take, for instance, the broadband. You know what the number is. The first price was $50,000. We negotiated with Comcast to run that line down there. We paid half of it for $8,500. That's on there.
Right.
That's covered, was in the, covered in the first qualifications for the ARPA funds.
No, I understand what's covered in the first qualifications and everything, but we haven't had many discussions of how.
I'm just saying that I don't want to keep going on and on in here, waiting, waiting, waiting with the price of materials, the price of the construction. People get busy, they're not going to be able to provide their service, as we all know. The cost is going to go up. So your $900,000 might end up being $700,000.
I get what you're saying, but I'm asking you, capital planning is meeting next week.
Okay, and then where do we go from there, I guess?
If I could, but hasn't capital plan already looked at this? I mean, they were at our meeting last month, they've seen these numbers.
The Capital Planning Committee has not met yet as a committee?
That we're like a new committee.
We're meeting on the 19th. We have, we have all the information?
Meet with us in December when we went over these numbers?
There were representatives from capital plan there, but.
Yeah.
Look, I don't care. If people want to approve these tonight, I'm all for these infrastruc, Phil, I'm all for these infrastructure programs. I thought that, I thought that we were leaning towards, given the change, looking at everything as a whole and making sure that, you know, people want to approve these infrastructure things tonight? I mean, some of these are no brainers.
Well, I guess, a question for the fire chief is, should there be purifiers on here that you submitted? Is that, maybe that's missing from the list?
I do believe I did not submit it on the new sheet, they were on the original.
Okay. Do you remember the dollar figure?
Um, I have that here.
I want to say the unit was $1,600 or $1,800, and I think I had $500 for install, if I remember correctly.
Is that the air filtration system?
Hang on, Christie, one sec. I see you, Christie. We're just waiting for Marlene to.
So air filtration system for fire apparatus, two units plus installation, that looks like that was $5,500?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, that's a lot more than you were just saying.
Well, I was at like $4,400.
Okay, okay. So we need to add $5,500 to this list.
Okay. Christie was looking to make a comment.
A question. So, looking at the form, because it's real, I think, feels like the same thing just happened with the fire filtration. There are some things that we had on the school list that showed up on the first list but are not on the accounting copy that came through this afternoon.
What was received today from the school department was one sheet, and that was for purifiers.
The metafire.
So the previously submitted sanitizer bulbs and masks, which was an additional $22.88, so.
So I could just clear up that. The original list, we were working from the original list. The accountant asked all department heads to submit their requests on a form. So basically, what they were doing is taking what they had originally submitted and putting it on a form. The school department submitted one form for purifiers. Those were on the original list. And then I believe they were looking for masks on the original list.
I mean, I'm under the impression that the school department bought massive amounts of masks, and the school department received a lot of other recovery money.
That's, I'm not arguing that, and everyone's very grateful. So, and right now, our original list is like 1% of this, so, and I don't think we've put in for other new things. I'm just trying to understand the discrepancies between the list we all were working off of last time and the accounting list, just because of the change I noticed in the school stuff, and I'm hearing Bob noticing on his. So that's, I'm just trying to understand if there was another process or if it just fell off on accident.
I think Bob said he did not submit it on this next list.
Yeah.
It wasn't an oversight on our part, and Mr. Wood maybe can.
I can probably clarify this. So the problem is, is that the first meeting was just kind of, this is just a quick, you know, this is, these are a list of projects, and then we created a form that I needed everyone to fill out so we could have the proper documentation, the proper signatures, the proper approvals, the proper detail that we needed to submit for our filing. And that form that was submitted, anything that came back to me on that form was added to the final list that you got today.
Right.
So if that form wasn't completed, then I didn't fill that out. But I can certainly add that to this list and send it out later tonight.
And maybe Superintendent Wood can clear up the.
He might go and clarify.
Yeah.
Marlene, the form that I sent had multiple tabs on the bottom. Did the tabs not come through with the form?
I thought it was just a PDF.
Well, I was given the copy, so I didn't, did you email it to me?
I shared it with you.
Okay, because it was handed to me, and it's one page. So I apologize, I did not realize there were multiple pages.
I could share it with you to share with Lori.
Okay.
Okay.
Because there are multiple tabs on the bottom.
Okay.
I apologize.
And we'll get this spreadsheet updated.
I do want to just point out, though, that there was, there was a lot of specific recovery funds and things for COVID supplies that were directed directly to the schools already, some large amounts of money that already went there for those things.
There was a lot of stuff that was mostly for instructional stuff for catching up due to COVID, and I think the stuff that we submitted for ARPA funding was exclusive to things that have already been spent and that were at a very strict parameter in terms of, you know, it was the filtration stuff, and the masks are specifically clear masks that were a requested need that came up later for folks who have the need for better ability to reading lips and stuff like that for speech use. So it's a small amount of money. It was mostly just clarification for me. Thank you.
Okay, Finance Committee, Select Board, I don't know what course you want to take tonight with approving some of these. I think it's pretty, I think it makes a lot of sense to just very quickly approve any that are really specifically COVID response items, and we can get those taken care of, and then we can, could revisit some of the other issues either tonight or at another meeting.
Well, I expect we will continue to have.
I mean, there'll be, obviously, there'll be lots of meetings, but I'm just.
Are we going to consider the COVID response items that were on the other list but didn't come on the form?
Yes, yes.
There's multiple different COVID response items now here that we have somewhere on the list and somewhere off.
Right.
The problem is, none of the forms are available for you guys to sign them right now, too, so.
I believe we should, everything that was in the pipeline, that was a reasonable request right now, like the filters and the masks and things like that, we should, we should approve or sign off on, or approve the item, and then when the money comes in, will, you know, however it has to work, just to keep the ball rolling for what I would. it has to work, just to keep the ball rolling for what I would consider the necessary small-ticket items, you know, from a cost perspective, small ticket.
Yeah. That's, I mean, and they're specifically for COVID response, which is what, you know, we're smack dab in the middle of. These things need to be...
If you want to move with the COVID response items, that's fine. But I think we need to get a deadline to do the infrastructure stuff before prices keep going up. So I think tonight we also have to make a date of when we're going to do the infrastructure stuff. And it can't be too far away. It's got to be either after capital does their planning meeting, and then we get together after that, because prices are going to keep going up. And I do agree with Phil.
That's a good idea.
And some of the infrastructure things are smaller sized. You know, the broadband thing at $8,500, and we know we're going to do it. So maybe that's something we just take care of tonight.
I think also the fuel tank project, we've already agreed to do one way or another.
Right. Yeah, so just do it and...
How are we going to do it, I guess, is the question.
Right. So can we backtrack and go to the COVID, to the COVID items that I think all of us agree are a more than worthwhile use of this money? That would include, I mean, I guess that would include these school items. We would add the filters for the fire apparatus. That's $5,500. So I'm, what I'm looking at is the air purifiers for the town offices, the air purifiers at the school buildings. Now, those were purchased before, correct?
So everything on that school list is already purchased. So the costs are known, their actual costs, because the money's already spent.
Is that reimbursement for things you've already spent?
No. So where was it spent out of? Was it spent out of your operating budget?
Yeah, that's... I think it was spent out of other recovery funds you already received, correct?
Right.
So then why would you want to use these recovery funds? If you had recovery funds to use, to spend on it?
Because we actually have some other shortfalls that weren't in our budget. So we're just looking for available dollars, but we're going to have to come ask at some point for more money. So it's just a matter of, this was the request. We knew we had these costs that had been...
Sounds like they're asking for reimbursement.
Yeah, I think that that, that's, that's a, that's taking a different route to, I think if you have shortfalls in your budget, those need to be addressed, just like any shortfall in any budget should be addressed, not by asking for reimbursement from these for things that you were paid to already buy. So I guess I would hold off, I personally would hold off on the school things, because that's not...
Diana, I don't think that's what she said. I don't, I don't think she said that they were paid for. I guess I'd like to hear the superintendent clarify, but I believe what I heard is they paid for it out of their current budget. And if they could get reimbursed for some of these things, and they could use that money in the current budget as it was originally designed to be used for. Now, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, but that's how I heard it.
No, that would be correct. I mean, as I understood, the original assignment was to identify items that were purchased for the purpose of COVID recovery. And so these were additional items that were not part of the planning process, in the budget process, that we identified early in the fall as part of our planning to, for COVID response.
Okay. What I thought I heard Christie say, hang on, what I, what I thought I heard Christie say was that these were items that you had, you received COVID response monies. So these were items that were purchased with COVID response monies, but now you have budget shortfalls. That's what I thought I heard Christie say.
I heard that, too.
Yeah.
No. That's not, that's not how I meant that. I think Daryl summed that up accurately.
Correct. And Essar isn't necessarily for COVID response. It was designed for educational matters related to getting, coming back into school after, for educational activities to get back up to speed after being a year out. And so, you know, technically, I wouldn't see air filters as that particular rationale for the, for the Essar funds. I mean, that...
Okay. But there was the COVID money that the town got, a very significant amount of which was funneled to the school for things like air purifiers, the...
HVAC system.
The HVAC system. I know that there was massive amounts of masks and sanitizers and things like that purchased. There was the, what am I trying to say? What's the light thing that sanitizes?
Most of this money, Diana, is to keep that going. And so, you know, a lot of the air, there's a few new air purifiers, but a lot of it is the cartridges that keep the machines that the town purchased last year to keep them up and running.
Right. We had to replace the filter.
Bulbs for the sanitizing stuff. So we'd like to keep using that equipment and have the benefit of what the town spent last year carry through all of this year.
I think the question, and you guys might have said it, but there's been a lot of conversation. So are you asking, the funds you're looking for, which is absolutely fine, I get it, are not to replace previously spent COVID funds? Is, did I say that right? In other words, we're not taking one pool of COVID money that was granted to the schools or the town, spending it, and then trying to replace it with other, now that we have ARPA money? I think that was Diane's concern, not to speak for her, but that's kind of what I heard said at the beginning.
I misrepresented that, and I apologize, because we're not replacing COVID.
Okay. That's all, that's all I wanted to get straight in my own mind. Because that wouldn't make sense to me. Spend COVID money and then take other COVID money to act COVID money.
Well, and that's, that is originally, Christie, how you said it. So...
Yes, I was talking about general funds, because we need to keep the school building filtration going. We need to...
Right. But I remember the list was cartridges, bulbs, and something. So if you think about it, like the UV sanitizers, for example, when you buy them, they come with a bulb. But that doesn't last forever, and you have to replace it with a new bulb at some point. So it was already purchased once, but that doesn't mean it lasts forever. So now you have to maintain it going forward.
Yeah.
Right. And I understand all that. Sorry, Dave.
Now, when this money runs out, and we're using this money to buy cartridges and light bulbs and other stuff, are we, is the school department going to then replace, put that money in their budget for next year? Or you're going to be coming back to the town, looking for more money to pay for light bulbs and cartridges and things like that? When does it end that the town or the funds stop paying for those things for the school department, like toilet paper and paper towels and, you know, things to clean the floor with and clean the bathrooms? I mean, when does that end? That's what I want to know, is part of that, because this $900,000 is going to run out at some point. And things that we're buying that are replaceable, we're going to have to figure out a way to replace them again somewhere else. I think that this money should be being used for stuff that's going to stay in the ground for 30 or 40 or 50 years, or going to last for 15 or 20 years, not stuff that you're using over and over again every single year.
And I, I think that there's two components, and I kind of agree with you, Dave. I mean, that's what I mean when I say I want the community to get the most bang for the buck. I want to spend this on the most worthwhile. That said, there is, there's definitely a part of this that needs to be expended on, you know, the COVID response.
You buy the air purifier.
I just want to...
Another department, rather than change, you've got to put the money to do the filters.
I get that. So, but I guess my point is, I just want, I want, a lot of money was filtered to the school department from our initial COVID funds that we got in. We made a huge investment in making the school safe. We need to, if they need new filters, we need new bulbs. I get it. I just want to make sure that we're doing this fairly. I mean, there, there's other needs throughout the town, too. And so if it's just coming up budget shortfalls because of things, those are going to have to be addressed a different way.
No, I don't think it's just about, about that. I think it's just, it's about, when the request came in, here were the very specific COVID costs that weren't covered in our budget, that weren't covered by some other funding. If we've had to pull away from other things, you know, I get that all, every department has those challenges. We're not asking for more than we put on the original plan. And I think the school is appreciative, and the school has also gone out and got a tremendous amount of PPE and others, from other sources, so that we haven't been adding to our budget or the town's budget or this request. So I feel like they've done a lot of diligence on that. And, you know, also just to recognize that a lot of the early PPE was physical product based on the number of people and the square footage, and the schools are sort of disproportionately needy in that respect. So I get that we got a lot and are appreciative of it.
I think to David's point, Diana, if I could, and I don't disagree, Christie, with what you said, but I think to David's point is, as, as every department, not just the schools, as every department is moving forward, and I think the finance committee will agree with me, all these things should be built into the budgets. And then we look at the ARPA fund, sort of like a one-time grant that might come in, where we can use that money to offset things we already ordered and free up that money one time, you know, because it can't be an ongoing stream of revenue, like I wouldn't imagine. I mean, it would be great if it was. So I would just suggest that all the departments build that in there, and then wherever we can help out with certain thing, we, meaning this committee that's on this Zoom call, or GoMeeting call, then we do it that way. But because when the funds do run out, to David's point, the need is still going to be there, most likely, and that's going to have to be absorbed in every department's budget. Thank you.
I agree with you, Brian, to a certain extent, but I think also, there's a reason why they designed the funds to be spent potentially over a five-year period, you know, because, you know, most of these things are contained within a fiscal year for a reason, right? But this is because they're anticipating that you might have ongoing needs that go on beyond this fiscal year, you know?
Well, as well as large infrastructure projects that take time, Sean. So, I mean, I think they give you a timeframe for both of those reasons.
Well, right. I mean, yes, I guess. I mean, we have large infrastructure projects that take time every year, and we're still constrained by capital, free cash is still constrained by the fiscal year, right? So, I mean, yes, but I think that the, you know, it's not like, there's no rule about this. You can choose to spend it. I mean, the other piece of it is, are we going to be using UV sanitizers and air purification systems in town hall, in the fire department, in the schools forever? I don't know the answer to that question. Have we considered that? You know, I mean, maybe not, is the answer.
Well, maybe not forever, but I think it's reasonable that it's going to be for a while.
Three years from now, we won't be doing it, just like we didn't do it for the previous three hundred and thirty years.
I think it's reasonable to think that we're going to need to do this for, you know, another year or two.
Of course, maybe in the near future, for sure, yes.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. So, I mean, I understand that the school needs these. I guess I'm just trying to, I, I don't know exactly, you know, there was a lot of money given, exactly what was it used for, what things have been expended already. It's, I think it's a fair question and a reasonable question to ask as we look at trying to spend this money in the most responsible way.
Okay. I'm hearing two, I'm hearing two things. One, I'm hearing that, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, that the school received a lot of money for COVID things. They spent all of that money, and then they had to go buy some more COVID things. Is that what basically happened? I mean, or are they tanking the money and trying to fill in shortfalls? But I'm not sure.
Well, two different things have been said, so I'm...
So, can the school clarify for me, if you spent all of your COVID money, and then you had to go buy some more COVID-related things, or are these are things above and beyond of what the money is spent on the COVID money, the $298,000 or whatever it was?
Right. So, so when we put together the Essar grant, we did not, these were things that we did not anticipate to have to do, especially, for example, the replacement of the filters in the existing machines that we had. So we did not anticipate doing that. So when we purchased it, we purchased it out of our direct budget for those materials under our general maintenance supplies.
Not out of the other COVID money you were given.
Correct.
And what is the request now for more COVID stuff? How much? What's the total amount?
So I, can I throw something out? I mean, and maybe this is going to muddy the waters a little more, but we have a certain period of time to spend this money. And to many of your points, some of these things may be ongoing, not just this year, maybe next year, maybe the year after. We don't know at this point. So we have $971,000. Do we want to determine how much we actually want to spend this year and then wait until next year, rather than, because right now, according to this list, we could spend, we're going to spend two-thirds of this money this year and have only a couple hundred thousand dollars set aside for next year, right?
We only have 485,000 right now. Just keep that in mind, too. We don't have the full 971 yet.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Yep. Sean, you have something?
No, it's just, I mean, I think at this point, though, that we're kind of like, we're kind of going around in a circle a little bit, because the way this money now, the new understanding of the way this money currently works is, there's really no reason that we have to spend any of this on COVID-related things, or not on COVID-related things, really. You know, and it's really sort of fungible with free cash. It can be, you could use free cash for that purpose. So in a way, I mean, there's almost an argument, given reporting requirements and stuff, to say, let's spend all this money. And then if we want to pull it out of free cash and hold that aside for some future COVID expense, we can just use our free cash, which is then unencumbered by any federal requirements like that. I mean, you know what I mean, like, kind of maintaining two separate streams of money like that, like, we don't even really need to do that. We could, but there's, I don't understand the need to do it, or why we have to think about this as being COVID-related and free cash is not being COVID-related, or just because that was the original intent. But it appears, based on what Fed is telling us, this is no longer necessarily the intent. So...
Okay.
Well, the only point to that, Sean, is some of these items, some of these items...
Daryl, Daryl.
Have how much available at this point? 450?
485, the top right of the spreadsheet.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. So no matter what, tonight, any decisions we make, we can't spend any more than $485,000. Is that fair and accurate?
Yes.
Nine, 321.
Right. So if we did the COVID, well, what we're calling the COVID-related, the smaller things, right? The, and, and then we could, we could, we could pick a couple of the big infrastructure projects tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, if, especially with Phil wanting to get going on some of them and feeling like they're more timely. I mean...
But is some of this stuff on, I don't have capital plan in front of me. Is some of the infrastructure already on capital plan?
Yes.
I think, I think some of it is.
Some of it is. Phil, could you come up and speak to that? So, hang on, Sean.
So are we saying we're looking at doing...
Fuel tanks, the fuel tanks, we really should vote on tonight, because that's...
Well, one way to look at it is you what the cost of the COVID stuff and whatever is left over from the 485, and then that... is left over from the 485, and then that, that's what Phil can target, right? What the remaining money from deducting?
I mean.
485, deduct the COVID, and Phil, here's your priority list of whatever is left for the 485.
I guess, but to Sean, Sean makes a good argument for not including COVID things in this at all. So, so let's just get to the, so your, the, the fuel tanks, that's a project that's already been voted on, that's, that's one, in my opinion, we should probably move forward.
We don't have enough money, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We need to bal, we need to balance that.
Yeah, and then.
We've already appropriated 95,000. 97,000. And we need 55,000 or give or take.
Phil, I'm going to run through these quickly. Can you tell me if they're on the capital plan? The, the, the school street drainage?
Yes.
The broadband?
Yes.
The Ferry Street and King Street generators?
Yes.
The Maple Street generators?
Yes.
The water filtration and piping at the wastewater treatment plant?
For the VOCs? Yes.
Is that what that is?
Twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yes.
The filtration plant logic controller, SCADA upgrade?
Yes.
And the Route 5 water main?
Yes.
So all of your items are already on the capital plan?
Yes.
So we know that the fuel tanks are priority one.
Correct.
What would you say your other ones are? I mean, can we assume that the broadband one would be a priority? That's only 8,500.
Right.
And then from there?
The water plant.
The what?
Which is which one?
Water plant. The logical?
Number what?
Number six? The water filtration pipe or whatever the logic thing?
Yeah, how much is the, I don't have the list in front of me, so.
Twenty thousand.
Wastewater plant? No, not the 12 million.
Number seven, he's talking about number seven for? The 60,000? Sixty thousand?
Yes.
Controller, the 60,000 controller.
Correct.
Well, you just were mentioning the Maple Street generators.
Yep. Yeah, the, the, replace the logic controller at the water plant, 60,000?
That's 60,000, and then, I mean, I don't know how much money is going to be left after, or if there's going to be money left, but, thank you.
Okay, so you, you listed.
So the fuel tank project's number one?
Yes, I get that.
Okay.
And then you told me that the broadband would be number two.
Where are we going next? Are we going with the 60,000?
Yes.
For the, um, logic controller?
That's 60,000, yep.
You had that as number three.
Eighty-five hundred for the broadband extension?
Yes.
Gets you up to 123.5.
Yep.
Personally, I think that's a smart spend. I mean, I'm not saying only that, but.
Right.
And the Maple Street generator.
And then the, the Maple Street generator, which is number five, which is a much larger expense.
125, right?
125?
Yep.
And that's one, though, that you're saying if we had a failure there, would be much more costly to us.
You have, but they're not allowed.
So that gets to 28500.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the small, what's the small COVID stuff is what, another 30, 40,000, something like that?
Including the schools' items? Did you have a?
Fire department, the school, all that.
Yeah, what's that add to it?
I'm sorry, can you just give me a dollar amount on the school list, Kristy or Michael?
97.33.
97.33. That's the.
25,000 something plus 97.33 plus the fire department.
And the fire department was 5,500, I think?
Yes.
Then the town?
Forty, you're talking 40,000 there.
Was it the, what was the town?
Town office purifiers.
It, it looks like 25,495 is what's on this list.
Mm-hmm, for general government items, yep. What is the COVID coordinator?
I mean, the single audit doesn't need to be decided tonight, that's not going to happen right away.
What is the COVID coordinator for 6,500?
That was the payroll that was paid out. We're no longer paying out that because.
So it's already been paid?
That's been paid.
So that one just needs to be.
So you see the actual cost, that's what's been paid out.
Something tells me that the original air filtration, air purifier for the town hall, when Sharon was here last time, that number was pretty big, I don't know.
It was 23. It's been reduced to 10,000.
She said she was going to do some additional research, I think, and.
Yep, yep, measuring areas, DPW offices.
Square footage of all the places, yeah.
Yeah, and then.
I would encourage her to talk to the schools about what they bought in terms of, the units have been reasonable, the, I mean, so the real cost for us for like, it was 43 units was less than what we're looking for there.
Yeah, she's, we've been communicating, she's been, I, I, she may have, I'm not certain.
Who's she?
She may have talked to Riley, Sharon.
Sharon's been talking to Riley about the.
The form is from the same company, so she must have talked to somebody.
And, and just to the same point, the broadband expense was originally much larger and Phil has been able to get it down to that 8,500, so.
It was originally 50,000.
Okay.
What, what number are we up to? 263, 733, but I didn't add the purifier.
You're up to around 285,000, 280,000, something like that.
And are we adding the payroll cost for public health? Didn't we agree at the last meeting that we were going to pay that no matter what? That was a 65, 52?
Has to be taken care of.
Has to be taken care of.
I mean, in, in some respects, that whole 25,000 in that, between the payroll, administrative expenses, and, I mean, I would just sweep that whole thing.
The town general government?
With all that, generally, we were at 288.5-ish.
Okay.
That's with all that, the fire department, the school's request, and the two infrastructure projects.
So if we're at 280?
We have more than two infrastructures, we have four infrastructures, four infra.
So why don't we add the other, uh, generator? Weren't there two generators in there, Phil?
Right, but I, I think you should add the Route 5 water main project because that project, that project has no contingency now in that project. We spent the money to, we spent.
That's an additional 1,000, that gets us to 385, 387.
That's 100,000.
That's 100,000.
And then that's the, go back to your statement.
That's where we went and we extended the water main?
Yes.
And we're not extending, we upgraded the water main and that wasn't included in the original Masworks grant.
Okay.
So, right now, it's going to be 100,000 out of the operating budget over, so.
Okay.
I think we should put that money back in there.
Well, and at a time when the project is going to be going on in this, yeah, that one makes sense, too. So, I just want to recap. So we're looking at the first four, that total general government of 25, 495, yes?
Yep.
We're looking at the 74, 45 for the school building air purifiers.
Right. Yep.
Okay, we're looking at the 55,000 fuel tanks, the 8,500 broadband, the 125,000 Maple Street generator, the filtration plant logic controller for 60,000, the Route 5 water main for 100,000. And then we would skip down to the isolation gowns, et cetera, for the ambulance at 1,500. The air filters for the fire department apparatus at 5,500, and then the additional school supplies at 97.33.
That's not an additional 97.33, it's only an additional 22.88 from the list you just gave.
22.88, okay. Okay. And was that the clear masks?
Yes, and the sanitizer bulbs.
Okay.
So what, what number does that get us to?
I don't know.
Give me a second, I, I missed one thing, she got it, I'll add it back.
Might have got an extra DPW project, but I came up with 480.
You got 400?
That's what I had when I did it, it was about 488.
Yeah, we had 479.
Yeah, so it's cutting it close.
We're under the 485.
Well, no, it's, it's really 479. Well, because isn't that, the 479, it's 485, the six, that 6, 6,500 is in there for the COVID coordinator.
Right, the 479 is what is available.
Right, but we were adding the COVID coordinator into our side of the figure, so.
That's right.
And your, your, your reimbursement for the Route 5 could, you could do 90,000 of it now and wait till you get a little bit more money and do the other 10 or something like that. Because that's not something, that's not something that has to be paid out, it's just a transfer, right, paper. Just re-add that, because I, I think I had a different number earlier, and I want to just make sure we're doing this right. So, I'm looking at the list right now, and we have, we have 24, we're doing the whole 25,495 at the top of the list, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I'm just going to stick with the COVID stuff for a second. Plus 5,500 for the fire department.
Yes.
Plus 22.80 for the school, is that what that is?
22.88.
97.33 for the schools.
You keep, oh, you.
733.
She added two to the 7445. Okay.
Kristy, I didn't hear it.
Sorry, so 9,733 is the total sum of all the school stuff.
Okay. All right, so that's 40,728, that's about what I got the first. Next, then 55,000 for the fuel tanks. What, what did we decide about the, did we decide anything about stormwater? That's not on there, right?
No, it's the broadband at 8,500.
Okay, so the broadband at 8,500, we did.
Maple Street generator, 125.
25.
The.
And then the 100,000, right?
Yep, but then the, the 60,000, too.
60,000 for the controller, right?
Yep. 100,000 for water, water main.
Hang on, I'm doing the controller, 60,000 for the controller and 100,000 for the water main, 389, 228.
Yep.
But then what about the isolation gowns for the ambulance at 1,500?
At 1,500, okay.
That's where I was earlier.
That's where I was, too.
Lori, you're the accountant, are we right?
F409. Maybe you guys aren't including the COVID coordinator already spent.
We did, I thought we did.
Because we've got the full.
I just took 25,495 from that top column, the total.
That's in there.
And that 25 does include the, the COVID coordinator?
It does.
Yes. It doesn't matter to me, I mean, I guess, whether it's 390 or, well.
So we can approve, we can approve the, yeah, we can approve this. But let's approve the projects and move on, right? We, we have the money, we're all agreeing well, I think we're all in agreement, and, and it's going to be up a little or down a little because that cost has probably changed since we've gotten some of the quotes, some of these, I, you know, aren't exact figures, so hopefully they go.
I came up with.
I'm not hoping against the 485 anymore.
That's what I mean, we're not, we're going to have to regroup anyways, and Lori, when might we get the next round of funding, approximately, do you know?
May, not again until May.
And what, do we know what percentage or what amount that would be?
Yes, so we'll get, um, let me look at the spreadsheet, because it came, it came in two pieces. So we got 170 and then we got 315, so we'll get that again. We'll get 170 in May and then probably 315 in August.
Okay, so, so we can plan that as our earlier conversation said, well, we're going through the various capital projects and getting ready what the funding source will be prior to town meeting and all of that. In the meantime, we're taking care of some of these important things for the schools and for the DPW and, and air filters for town hall.
Can I just, can I, the number I came up with, what, Sean, was your number 390, 728? Yeah, okay, that's what I got, too. And then I just want to add, I just want to ask one question. So I think that's a really good list and an excellent start and some really good projects. But I'm just curious about these life packs, again, for the fire department, it's a small dollar amount, it's 19,000. I'm curious.
We have out-of-date units that are no longer supported, they won't repair them, do anything to them, and they're actually on their last battery at this point. And then, a couple of them are also for fire apparatus in the schools.
So could I, could I suggest that we add that 19,000 expense for the life packs and AEDs at this point?
That still gets us under the 485, so we should be okay, right?
Yeah, I buy it, yeah.
Yeah, I already had it in my number, so that's why I had 409.
There we go.
I was wondering why I was off by 19,000.
I mean, I think that also is an expansion, it's, it just makes perfect sense. It's a, it's a, it's important purchase and not a lot of money.
Okay, so we are going to include that?
I, that's just my suggestion, I don't know how other people feel, I just want to throw that out there.
I think we have to just.
Offer before May, too.
Now, does the board of selectmen just need to vote on this and then we move forward?
Yeah, just the select board.
I think so.
Okay, yes, yes.
I think officially, Daryl, yes, but if you guys want to throw a vote up here in support of the projects.
I want to be, I, I think we're clearly on board with this, I just didn't know, like, you know, I'm not used to doing this, usually we have to run this through town meeting and, you know, this, this is an easy way.
He is just.
Okay.
Can I, can I retract my previous statement? So here, here is the reason, I argue against myself, here is the reason to, to hang on to some of this money is because it doesn't require appropriation.
Right.
So if you need it, if you need it in an immediate situation.
Right.
Helpful, I mean, I'm not arguing not to do anything you just did, I'm just saying that like, with the money that comes in in May, or specifically the money that comes in in August after town meeting, that might be useful in terms of, because it doesn't require appropriation, so it potentially saves you from going back to another town meeting.
It works, it works on both sides, Sean, you, you know what I mean? You get to, it doesn't have to go somewhere. So if you spend it, if you spend it, you've approved it, if you don't spend it, it's just yours to carry forward for the next four years, so.
Hang on one second.
Make a motion to the true.
Hang on, Brian, can I, sorry, we just have one more comment or something.
And I, I would hope that departments would be putting replacement cartridges and all these kinds of things that we're spending some money on today in their budget for next year, so that they don't have to ask for that next year for special funding. Do you need cartridges for your air filters, you need bulbs for your sanitizer, you need PPE, you need AEDs?
Well, and that should come out of the facilities budget.
Right. That should all be part of somebody's regular, regular budget, not special funding.
And I, I guess I would, I would also just kind of like to see some type of accounting on that, because we bought a lot of air, air filtr, excuse me, filtration and sanitizing things with those original funds, and then schools weren't open for most of last year, so I'm just curious why those supplies are already needing to be replaced. I would like to see some type of, that, that's, that's where I'm coming from with, with my comments about this. I'm not suggesting we don't fund these for the school or that they're not necessary, I'm just curious where all the money went and where all the supplies went, the, the use of those. So that's, that's just something on the side. So, I just, Brian, I know you want to make the motion, can I just run through the list one more time?
No, I don't, I don't have to make the motion, I just wanted someone to make the motion.
Okay. How about if I run? How about if I run through the list and then a motion is made following that? Just so we all hear the list one more time? Okay, so, all of the first four items under town general government. The air purifiers, as well as some masks and some replacement bulbs for the school. The fuel tanks up at the DPW garage, the broadband at the wastewater treatment plant, the Maple Street generator, the logic, the plant logic controller, and the Route 5 water main, the isolation gloves and, and gowns for the ambulance, the life packs, and AEDs for the fire department, our ambulance, and the air filters for the fire apparatus. That's the complete list, is that correct?
That's what I have.
Okay.
What was the total on that?
And the total comes to, Lori?
409, 728. And I will update the spreadsheet, send all the appropriate forms with my signature attached, and then you guys can just sign it all as one packet.
Okay, so these papers that we have here, do we sign tonight?
Nope.
No, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to sign those because we weren't prepared for you guys to sign them tonight. I didn't think we'd approve anything. So, I'll get one, like I said, one packet together, and you can sign everything as once.
Okay, great.
So, I just have a question for Lori. So, how are the funds going to be allocated? Are you going to set up accounts?
I already did. It's been sitting there, waiting for you to spend it, Phil.
That's wonderful.
Yep, the account's already there. I'll send you an email with the account number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, did, did, did Bob leave? Did he get a call or?
I'm not sure, he did, I think he left, yeah.
Okay.
Nope, he's coming back.
Oh, he's coming back, okay. I didn't know if he got a call, okay. Okay, well, that was a lot of work, a lot of.
We got through it.
It's, it's okay to have a lot of work to have, to spend money that we actually have, as opposed to trying to figure out how to do things with money we don't have. And without raising taxes, yeah, that's a lot of. And that's roughly half. So, we took care of roughly half of it. So, that's good. I appreciate everybody's input. Finance committee, did you guys need anything else?
No, I think we're good.
So, would the plan, Darrell, be, I think, if I'm hearing right, to maybe not think about any more of these funds until much later in the year when some additional ones have been received by us? And it'll give us some time to, you know, reevaluate the requests and needs, which are ever-changing, right?
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I thought you went through the list and then Brian was making the motion. I thought.
Oh, yeah, we, we didn't actually vote.
Didn't, I thought you did, okay.
So, we do need a motion on that list that I read.
I'll make a motion to approve the ARC of funds as we discussed this evening for the various projects.
Right, the 409, 728.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to thank everybody for their input. And Lori, thank you for being here as well.
It was very helpful.
Appreciate it. I think we made a good, good dent in the projects and spending of the funds, so. That's all I wanted to say, thank you. Thank you, Christie and Michael as well.
Yes. Yes, much appreciated. Okay, so all those in favor?